The time now is 6:30 PM, and I will call the June 3, 2024, meeting of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer led by Chaplain Dr. Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we pray that you would be glorified on tonight through the decision of this Lawrence Common Council. We pray that they would have the eyes to see how their lives are all connected and how their common good is upheld when they listen and respond to those whom they represent and serve. May this meeting, O Lord, be conducted decently and in order. May they agree to disagree when there is difference in a man's opinion. We pray, O Father, that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and courage to do what is right and just for all citizens. May this Common Council put the interests of others above their own. Lord, may they act with love for the common good. May the decisions they make be made with integrity and honesty for the best interest of all citizens. We thank you again for this Common Council. We thank you for our mayor, our city staff, first and sponsor, our citizen, and all of those who worked to make this place we call home such a wonderful place. This we ask in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Dr. Thompson. Next on the agenda item is the roll call of members and determination of quorum.
I'm here, Councilman Giles on Zoom. I can't get the video up.
Okay, so we have two on Zoom and seven present. You might want to turn on your camera because we need a picture.
Yes, I'm trying to turn on my camera. For some reason, the icon is gray and not allowing me to turn that on. I apologize. So if I can't vote, I understand until I get that fixed. I understand.
Thank you.
Is he on a phone or a computer?
I'm sorry.
Is he on a phone or a computer?
Are you on a phone or a computer? Counselor Giles?
I'm on a phone. I'm sorry, I'm on a phone currently.
Make sure your camera app is closed.
Make sure, please repeat that, please.
Make sure your camera app is closed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Evidently, it's not working right now. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna proceed here. So we have seven present, two on Zoom. I need to do a roll call. Let the record reflect that there are two on Zoom, one is, the camera's not present, and one on Zoom, and then we have the seven councilors here, and we have a quorum. President Robinson is participating in this meeting virtually. According to votes tonight, we were taken by a roll call. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of the agenda are located in the meeting room in the back on the table. Also, for any citizens wishing to speak under the citizens' comment later on the agenda, please sign in in the back of the meeting room on the table. Next on the agenda is the comments of the council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Any council members?
May I make a comment, please?
Yes.
First off, I want to say that I've had some constituents talk to me about concerns at the Gin Park Dog Park that chemicals have been sprayed, and so we're going to check into that and determine what is best practices in regards to that, so that's something to look into. And secondly, on a positive note, the National Arts Honor Society from Lawrence North High School has started painting a mural at Lee Road Park. They got started today, and by the end of this summer, there should be a lovely pollinator-friendly mural at Lee Road Park, so it's something to keep an eye on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I have two comments here. Mr. Walden of the Foam Craft Inc. sent me an email for the no parking signs to be reviewed back on May the 28th of 2024, and I have referred this matter over to the Winfield Administration to set up a scheduled roundtable meeting with Arbor Homes located at 9220 Harrison Park Court to discuss this matter before an ordinance can be done, anything done about it. Hopefully, we can get this on the books and scheduled sometime this month and have both parties in compliance. And also, there was a barbecue neighborhood meeting, May the 23rd, at 8405 East 47th Street, and it was from 2:00 to 6:00. And it was stated in the community meeting that we had here at the government center back in April. And I would like to thank the CFO, Mr. Desmond Matthews, for inviting us all to break bread and take, just take a breath. In attendance were President Robinson, Vice President Freeman, and District Counselor Number Four, Carlos Jennings, and some of the residents were also there. Are there any other comments?
The police stopped by as well.
The police were there as well, and they were friendly.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Counselor.
If I may, I, probably a lot of you know, I live across the street from this facility, and I don't know if it was an oversight or what, I was at the meeting here, and I know all my neighbors, and I went and actually spoke with quite a few of them. Myself and the majority of the neighbors that lived directly within eye shot of this facility had no knowledge of this barbecue, so I understand it was a great thing, a good time, and I appreciate that they put it on, but it would have been better attended had we all would have been notified. To my understanding, the only notification was a piece of paper like this that was stapled to telephone poles. Nobody, nobody got any notice, either email, no other notices other than the telephone pole papers. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Counselor Wells. Do we have any more comments from the councilors? Resolutions? Do we have any special recognitions or resolutions this evening? Okay. The next agenda item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th of 2024. Are there any questions for the minutes of the regular meeting for May 15th, 2024? Do we have a motion to approve the meetings of the regular meeting, May 15th?
I'll make a motion and be approved.
So it's first, Counselor Wells, second, Counselor Jennings. Thank you, councilors. Do we have a, we had a first and a second, so...
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed to a vote, and this will be by roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
The next on the agenda item is the signing of the vouchers and approval of claims and authorization of payments. And I just wanted to please let the record show that the controller emailed the claims for approval back on May the 22nd for the councilors to review and ask questions. Do we have a motion to approve the signing of the vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment?
It's all moved.
Counselor Jennings? Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, councilors. Is there any further discussion? None? Okay. We will now proceed to a roll call vote. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells? Thank you. The next item on the agenda are reports of committees. I understand that the Code and Rules Committee met this evening. Counselor Wells, are you prepared to give the council the recommendation of the committee?
Yes, I am, Madam President. We met today, and it was the recommendation of the committee to pass it to the full council for recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Wells. The next item, agenda item, is unfinished business proposal number six, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the proposal into the record?
Proposal number six, 2024, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to Establish an All-Way Stop Intersection at Chadworth Way and Chadworth Court and Kensworth Drive.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposal was introduced at our May 15th, 2024, meeting at the Code and Rules Committee recommended a favorable recommendation of this proposal tonight. The council will need to pass a motion suspending the requirement that the first and second reading shall be 30 days apart so that this ordinance can be considered tonight. We can consider the motion this evening or consider this ordinance at a future meeting date, which we do not need to suspend the rules. Do we have a motion to go ahead and suspend the rules of the proposal so that it can be considered for adoption tonight?
Madam President, I would move that we'd make a motion to suspend the rules and vote in favor of this tonight.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
That's being first and second.
Just one clarification, that the motion is just to suspend the rules first, and then you'll have a second motion on the ordinance, and it does appear that Counselor Giles can be seen. Counselor Giles, can we also hear you?
Yes, I can hear, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, so the first one would be to suspend the rules, to vote for the suspension of the rules. So we would do a roll call vote on that.
Can we have a discussion?
We can have a discussion.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Is there, is there a sense of urgency? Like, why are we suspending the rules? If somebody could just tell me so I know why I'm doing that, because it's not something we like to do unless it's time-sensitive, right? So is there, is there an urgent, you know, is this an urgent matter, I guess is what I'm asking?
Is it urgent matter?
May I, Madam President? For me personally, it's a safety issue, and the reason that we are bringing this here is to slow down traffic in a neighborhood, and for me, that's not something that I feel like needs to be wait. Like, why would we wait and have something potentially happen in those two weeks, and then we're like, well, we were here to talk about it, but we decided not?
That's fair, but now we're setting a precedence to suspend the rules for all ordinances for stop signs. So if that's what we're doing, that's fine, because it's all about safety, right? But the rules are in place for a reason. So, you know, if we, I guess what I'm saying is, is if we do it for this, we're setting a precedence to do it for the other ones that come before us, because they're all, we're doing most of these for safety reasons, right? That's why we're doing it. So as long as everybody's clear and understands that, the next time another counselor has one, we sort of set a precedent. So if we're fine with doing that, that's fine.
Okay. So everyone is in favor of suspending, suspending the rules?
Have to do a vote.
A motion? Okay. So I've got a roll call vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Giles?
I do have one additional question. I have no problem with us suspending the rules to do this, but I do want to put this out here. There has been the times where we've had to wait for the signage, so I don't know if this, if this, you know, if it's already in place, so if we suspend the rules, will this speed up or will this truly expedite the process of the sign being actually, you know, on the intersection?
Counselor Giles?
If I can comment?
Sure.
Street Director Jim Henigan's aware, and Counselor Massur has already spoken with him along with LPD, and they're both supportive of this. So once the council makes a decision, I will notify Jim Henigan, make sure that sign's out there in due time.
So I think Counselor Giles is asking is, have they been ordered? Do we already have them? That's what he's asking, because...
I can double-check with Jim.
These are stop signs, right? Okay, so we probably should have them already in inventory.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. We can now proceed to vote on the motion to suspend the rules. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
So that is unanimous. We will now proceed to consider the proposal. Do councilors have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion for proposal number six, 2024?
Motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Jennings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Kramer. Is there any further discussion? No discussion? We will now proceed for a roll call vote. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
The next agenda item is new business for the Common Council to appoint to the Fire Mayor Commission. I will now seek nominations for the appointments to the Fire Mayor Commission. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Damon Ramon.
Is that Damon Delong? And his last name? Are there any other nominations?
Who is currently serving that position? Is that Damon?
Damon is.
Yes.
I thought it was Damon Burris. It's Damon.
Madam, excuse me. Madam Clerk, can you please read the nominees into the record?
Nominees is Damon Ramon.
Are there any other nominations before we close the nomination window? The nomination window is now closed. So on, for the Fire Mayor Commission, we have Damon Ramon.
We have to do a vote.
Okay. And we will have to do a roll call vote on this. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson? Madam Clerk, would you please report the results of the votes?
Nine in favor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next resolution is number five, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution in its entirety into the record?
Resolution number five, 2024, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, recognizing Pride Month.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilors, since we are already in the month of June, I would not be referring this resolution to any committee and ask for a final vote of passage to be taken at this evening. Do we have any consent of the council to consider the resolution for adoption of this Thank you. So now we are going to do a roll call.
Second.
First, second.
Moved and second.
Kramer. Kramer.
Yeah. Roll call vote. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Giles? Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yeah.
Just the title. Thank you, councilors. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number five, 2024?
So moved.
First, Kramer. Second, Jennings. Thank you, councilors. Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed to a roll call vote. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Jennings?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Cronie?
Yes.
Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Thank you, councilors. The next agenda item is the new business proposal number eight, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the proposal into the record?
Proposal number eight, 2024, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Amending Title V, Article II, Chapter III, Section IV of the Municipal Code Regarding Solid Waste Collection and Disposal User Fees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the Common Council, I am referring proposal number eight, 2024, to the Committee of the Whole for Consideration and Recommendations. Councilors, one comment I have relating to this proposal is that we will need to reschedule our June 19th council meeting. Is the council available for June 26 at 6:30 for a rescheduling meeting?
Why, Madam Chair?
Yes. Counselor Giles?
What's the purpose of, of why are we rescheduling? What's going on? Not sure.
The county and public offices are closed for Juneteenth. Did you hear me, Counselor Giles?
Is it?
My calendar.
I think he's locked, he's breaking up.
Yes, yes, I don't know.
So does it, can I ask a question, Counsel Freeman?
Yes, Counselor.
And I think this is maybe more for Scott. Does it mess up our timeline if we have a meeting on the 18th instead of the, it seems like we're really close to our timelines, and maybe it gives us a little bit more room to get it passed. I know everything is still to be ahead, but it's really close.
Yeah, it's a good question. One piece of this proposal that will be required is a public hearing, so in order to do that, we will need to publish a notice in the newspaper at least 10 days in advance. So what we can do is confirm the newspaper forwarding deadlines, be able to get that notice in time, if you would like to meet on the 18th. Just confirm that we could get it published 10 days in advance.
So it would be 10 days in advance of this date, right? So that would be the 13th if we, or 14th if we published it tomorrow, or the 15th if we published it on Wednesday?
There's a BZA meeting at 6:00.
There's BZA. No, 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 I'm talking about for notice purposes. As long as you have it out, basically by the end of this week, it would meet the notice requirement, correct?
That's correct, and I believe the newspapers we need to publish in both publish on Fridays each week. What I would need to confirm is if we missed the deadlines for this week yet or not, so I can contact the newspapers.
Okay, just I don't, whatever, I just, I just, I just know we're on tight timelines for this. I'm sure that it's one of those things, the sooner we can get it done, the better.
If we do have to meet the following week, you will still be able to get it passed and approved in advance of July 1.
So are we going to decide on the 24th? Or are we going to go with the 18th? Or are we going to go with the 18th?
We also need to hold a committee of the whole meeting in advance for 26th.
So, when is that going to be? When is that proposed date? For the committee of the whole?
So, the 24th is on Monday. The 14th is on Friday. Day is the third.
We not have to do a public hearing at the committee, so that can be any time.
Yes, so is, is it scheduled, I guess, is what I'm asking? Do we have a date for the committee of the whole?
I don't.
No.
I'd like the earlier day.
June the 18th? I meant June the 17th?
So, um, so if we can get it confirmed, I think we could do it all on the 18th. We could do the committee as a whole meeting, and right after that, do the mid-month meeting and be done with it. But I, it's just a suggestion for efficiency, right?
We have BZA that day.
Yeah, but we'll just schedule it at a different time. BZA is, is, is scheduled at 5:30?
6:00.
Okay.
So, we're not going to have mid-month on the 26th? We're going to have it on the?
We're, we're having the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. We can have it at 5:00. Doesn't matter the time.
Depends.
I'm just trying to get one minute, let's do three.
About that 17th.
If we were to publish on June 7th, which would be our deadline, we would have had to forward notice by 12 noon today.
Okay.
I tried.
So, we're going to leave everything on June the 26th at 6:30 PM?
And committee of the whole meeting on, to be determined?
May it be the same day?
Have to be the same day?
Yeah, same day, word.
Before, okay. So, it could be the same day, an hour before?
5:30 preferably.
So, put it at 5:30, committee as a whole?
And confirm that it's available.
Okay. Is it available?
Madam President, I will be out of the country. I will zoom in. Just letting you know now.
So, we've had the discussion. And we will have the committee as a whole an hour before our regular council meeting, all on June the 26th. Okay.
So, we're not having the 18th meeting?
No.
That won't make it, won't meet the requirement.
Won't meet the timeline.
Right. Thank you, council. We will proceed with getting the meeting notices for these finalized and posted. Next item on the agenda is comments of the administration. Do we have any comments from the administration this evening?
Good evening, councilors. Also, thank you for taking action regarding the pride resolution. I actually want to share something with you all. As part of the efforts to show the Whitfield administration very supportive of pride and being an inclusive city, for the first time in my memory, in my understanding, the city of Lawrence will be walking in the Indy Pride Parade this Saturday and encourage the councilors, people of the administration staff, whoever, and people of the public who want to walk with us, will have a float in the parade this Saturday. We hope you join us. In fact, I would like to show you all a custom-made flag we have.
Nice.
An organization called Flags for Good made this custom flag for the city of Lawrence. And we want to thank them for putting this together. We'll be having several of them this Saturday, walking in the pride parade. If you guys want to join us again, please let me know. I'll make sure I send you the proper location for, to walk with us. I know some councils has expressed to, to join us in the pride parade this Saturday. And again, thank you again for taking action regarding the resolution. I do just have a few updates regarding what's happened within the administration from Lawrence Fire Department Chief Bob Wallace. Did want to let the council know that there will be two recruit graduates happening this Friday. It's from a combined first class with Pike Township. It will be at the New Augusta North Public Academy. That's 6450 Road Broke Road. Doors open to the families at 5:00 PM, and then ceremony starts at 5:30. So, we have two new recruits with the Lawrence Fire Department, and we hope you guys could come out and witness that. Additionally, from our street department, Jim Henigan let me know that sidewalk replacement and wheelchair ramps will be, be installed on Otis Avenue. We'll start that here in the next few weeks, once the weather permits. We have gorgeous weather this week, so I imagine the crew will be out sometime this week. Also, too, along 56th and German Church and Carroll Road, there will be some strip patching starting later on this week, once we weather permits. Waiting to hear a quote back from contractor, but this will be a temporary repair. We are working with Indianapolis DPW to do a total street repayment once we get additional resources from the CCMG grant, matching grant that we applied for. We hope to use that money for that. It is beyond maintenance repair, and it needs a total redone. And so, we're working with Indianapolis to get that settled. And we, we expect to make good progress with that. Councilor Brown from the Indianapolis Council has made that a priority as part of this year's agenda that she has. Also, too, this week in terms of city events, this Thursday is the start of our farmer's market. So, Jamie Warwick, our director of community engagement, excuse me, community, city events, is working really hard to get that set up for us. So, farmer's market will start this June, go all the way till October. Every Thursday, we hope you're out there for Fort Bend. There'll be live music. There'll be entertainment, there'll be vendors, good food, good opportunity to talk to folks. We hope to see you there. Also, too, coming up is the Fourth Fest, Fourth of July, just a little over a month. I would suggest you register online if you want to participate, walk in the parade. Any vendors want to participate in the festival? We have multiple food trucks that are registered. So, we'll be making final decisions and final calls on that as well. With that, if council has any questions, be happy to meet with you afterwards. And thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deputy. Next on the agenda item is citizens' comments. And I have the sheet here. So, the first person on the agenda for citizens' comments is J.D. Massur.
Hey, thank you, councilors. Vice President Freeman, President Robinson, other councilors. My name is J.D. Massur. I live at 6203 Carrington Drive, Indianapolis, 46236. I'm just here because, as you know, there are federal facilities here, there are state facilities, 1800 acre state park, state facilities, other state facilities. And in the interest of connectivity and building connections in the, in the community, I thought you'd be interested to know that there's a master naturalist that's about to be certified at the end of the dais over here, because she's been going to the state park and getting training. So, those resources will be available, those skill sets will be available to council. And she also has been participating in Hoosier Environmental Council webinars, three of them in fact, as a presenter in part. So, she's bringing notoriety in a good sense to the city of Lawrence. So, congratulations, Liz Massur.
Thank you. Next citizen up on the paper here would be Daniel Rapp.
Daniel Rapp, 2718 Waldenwood Drive. I hate, hate to keep harping on that, on transparency, but I was reading proposal number eight for 2024. And as I read the title, I'm a little bit dumbfounded as to what that proposal is supposed to be doing. I suspect it may be a rate increase for people having garbage pickup or sewage fees. Do I, I listened to your discussion about whether it was going to be referred to a committee or not. Now, I will ask the question. Council President, will this result in a rate increase for the citizens of the city of Lawrence?
No comment tonight, right now.
I asked a question, and you're saying no comment. That is not transparency.
Okay. So, if I could have someone from the administration to get with you, I believe it will be a rate increase?
And this is going to be published to the, when will this be published so that the public will know that this is a possible rate increase? You mentioned something about, something had to be published on a certain date in order for the committee, and there was a timeline. When are the details going to be published for the public to see?
I, I would recommend that we get Mr. Rapp after the council meeting.
Yes.
No. I want it part of the meeting, not, once you adjourn the meeting, it's all over. So, I will simply end this.
Point of order, please. Okay.
Is that me?
I said point of order, please.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Is there any other business to come before the council at this time? Seeing none and hearing none, we are now adjourned.